Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order tonight's Regular Board of Education Meeting for Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, here in the boardroom. If we could start with roll call, please, Tammy.
Kristy Stahlmar.
Here.
Maria Volpe.
Linda Yulang.
Here.
Nat Bashbeck.
Here.
Paul Group.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. We could all rise as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Larry Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Tammy, I didn't see any requests for public comments this evening. All right, at this time, we'll move right into recognition from the board. The first group of people we'd like to recognize is Kelsey Peterson, Adam Smith, Caitlin Callhouse, Kalen Byer, and Dawn Smith for their support of the Adapt to Achieve Summer School Program for Students with Disabilities. Kelsey designed the program with an interest in helping students with disabilities thrive in their community. Adam was instrumental in connecting students to the program and helping coordinate activities. Caitlin and Caitlin helped students by building relationships with them and served as role models. Dawn Smith has acted as the number one supporter of the program and has helped connect community resources. So, we're here to recognize them this evening.
I'd like to thank you.
Speaking for a picture here. During that time, you can be ready to speak about the program. Adam, do you like to start off or are you gonna put Caitlin?
I can do it. I can do it. So, it's really a program for students with disabilities to get out in the community. We set up a community garden down by Pine Crest, keeping them active through walks, just adventure out in the community. Learning how to even just take the bus is instrumental for some of these students where that's gonna be their only mode of transportation. And we also did a lot with law enforcement as well as the fire department, just building relationships with public safety.
Any new ladies you'd like to add?
I'd like to thank a lot of the community members that supported our program this summer. It was awesome. It was awesome to see how the communities supported us.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I wanna see how she's gonna get all these guys.
Need a bigger poster.
Our next group we're recognizing this evening is the Merrill High School Blue Jay Trap Shooting Team for being the Varsity Conference Champions. We've all provided with a list of those that are involved, both coaching and shooting for the team. Good news is, I only have one certificate for the team, so I don't have to try to guess. I only had to do that with the four, five of them. So, this time, we'd like to pose for a picture in front of the Blue Jay. And during that, after that time, I'm gonna ask some of the coaches to speak a little bit about the transition over the four years for the team. So, if you could join me for a picture, I'd appreciate that.
I wanna see how she's gonna get them all on.
Yep.
I'm gonna probably be over here somewhere.
Brett, you don't wanna be part of the cheer?
This is my work, so I sit here.
On behalf of the school board, we want to direct the attention, guys, for being conference champions. I'd like to hear a little bit about, as we said, when the board supports different organizations through the Activities Department. We're proud that things like conference championships happen, but when we're starting from the ground level all the way to this point, I'd really like to hear from you guys as to how that all happens.
Sure. I believe we started four years ago, '85. We had roughly fifteen to twenty athlete shooting. We were only with the high school at that time. We have since, last year, I believe it was, allowed the seventh and eighth graders to join our team. This year, we opened up to six seventh and eighth graders. We went from last year having thirty athletes on the team to fifty-nine this year. We shoot on Tuesday nights. We all shoot together as one team. We travel to all the different events as one team, and everybody shoots together then, too. It's been a fun journey.
Kevin?
You've all covered it.
Any of our shooters or athletes like to share something on their experience? Jake, don't make me pick on your wife. No, it could happen. Brandon? All right.
I will say one more thing. Last year, in the conference, and I believe there is roughly three hundred and fifty or so kids or athletes in the program altogether, we had a tie for first place last year with Nicholas Holes. This year, we had another first-place sole winner of the conference, and that was Zach Arviren. And out of the top ten, we have five of our shooters in the conference placed in the top ten for shooting.
How cool is that?
Very good.
Oh, we also did, last year, one of our female shooters received a scholarship from the SEPP, and this year, we received another one. Kaylee received, I believe it was five-hundred from the SEPP for a scholarship. So, very nice to think of you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ed? How many twenty-fives were shot? It?
Lots.
I'm scorekeeper for Wednesday night for the adults and junior shoot. I just got done figuring it out. Brandon, what, from a B shooter to an A shooter, double-A shooter, and I have only two double-A shooters on the squad this year. And he lost that by ten birds. So, that, on total.
How many birds? Where'd he finish?
Where did he finish?
Yeah. How many birds per the year out of twenty-five did he normally hit?
He had three hundred and eighty-five out of four hundred.
Nice job.
We have some great shooters on this team, and a lot of young kids coming up that are just as good. I think, do you remember what Zach Arviren was? He had like twenty-three, three average.
He was average?
Yeah. Twenty-four, straight across twenty-four for the year. So, got great athletes here. And as you can see, we're not gender, we're taken girls.
We've even got some riggers.
Yeah.
Five's, twenty-fives, there were a hundred and ten twenty-five shot on Wednesday nights. And these kids had a lot of them, so.
We're most proud.
Yeah, they're not only shooting on the school league, they're also shooting on the summer league.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Excellent. Thanks for all you guys do with the program. Thanks for bringing some added diversity to our activities because it brings, brings different choices to people, and we like to do that here at MAPS, and like to see everyone taking advantage of that. So, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Always great to start our meeting off with such great recognition and all the exciting things that have been happening. And to follow that up is no easy task. We'll have Dr. Sample at that point come up with our administrative reports, please.
Thanks, Kevin. Feel noticed, we do not have a Spotlight on Education report to start us off with. Our, we revised that format a little bit. You're gonna see a little bit more when we talk about student achievement and all four of our pillars in my report further down. But, one of the things that Linda's been working very hard with, with the CTP Committee, is to get multiple data sources. And so, we're building that scorecard as we go. We're starting with district. Buildings are starting to fill those in, and so, we're gonna see a better report next time. It will not be called Spotlight on Education, but we're gonna be bringing anything related to student achievement and success academically to you every month. Since we're gonna be switching from MAPS testing to FastBridge, those reports come in three times a month and various other progress monitoring things. So, we're gonna hopefully overwhelm you and entertain you with multiple data sources, not just growth, not just achievement, but a mixture of a little bit of everything at all levels. So, very excited about the FastBridge report that is coming in because that does reach all the way down into Pine River, and it goes all the way through the high schools. And now, we're gonna be comparing apples to apples all the way through. This will be a baseline year for that report, so look for much, much more academically in the future. So, we'll start with Mark Hackendorf's school, or Student Resource Officer Report, SRO report for last year. If you have any questions for Mark, he is at the table. I'm willing to entertain any questions.
As long as you mean answers.
I see that tobacco was the leading cause of problems, or close to?
Yeah, it was the leading, and actually, this was a first because there were no traditional smoking or chewing. It was all vape devices. Last school year, I had a few, but we really didn't have any human ordinance to combat that because our ordinance was made specific. So, over the course of last summer, I worked with the state attorney's office and state home, so we got vape devices covered in our ordinance. Top of their SROs, very near the same thing. Very few people are smoking or chewing for using vapes and using them in classrooms and stuff. And the reason to do this, they're really easy. I mean, a couple that got caught in the class was a teenager who was twice out of the classroom. So, I don't see it slowing down at all. Studies are all there that say things worse probably than cigarette, serious and chewy and smoking is worse.
Just reading an article today that talked about lung failure, not lung problems, lung failure associated with teenagers and vaping.
I see something where a young person had a hundred dollar, and we had ten. Yeah. The other thing what I noticed, and I think it was in the third paragraph of the first page, because I've been doing this since two thousand and six, is what called the trickle-down effect, stuff that was strictly the old at the high school, where because we own the middle school, now it's getting to all my communities. So, it's bad when this stuff is how it's going. I think it's just how it's designed, just kind of going right now.
Where are your offices located in the schools?
Um, in the, in the middle school. I'm right up in the main office. Actually, between the main office and Mark Seaman's office. This year, at the high school, I got moved. I was up in the front, and now I got moved across the hall and down the hall.
So, you're away from the entrance area?
Yeah.
And away from the communications area?
Yes.
So, we need you as by phone or via?
Yes.
How often do you get called out to Maple Grove?
Um, I went out there, I think, not three times last year. One time during the year before. But, when Pam even called me, I said, "Call Marathon County to see if they got somebody out there." And I'll come out there because it's one of my schools, but if there's, I believe I have jurisdiction out there to do anything. And they had two W's out there before I got out there, and so, I thought it was good for them because they're kind of in the middle of nowhere.
So, it's very seldom?
Yeah, very seldom.
Okay.
But I have talked with our sheriff, Ken Schneider, and if Marathon County doesn't get a call out there, they start sending the W's out there.
Okay. Do you all carry a little preventative?
I think those days are.
Go ahead, Linda.
So, the trickle-down effect, is you're meaning that the mental illness portion of our community is not just starting at the older ages, it's trickling down into the elementary levels?
It's mental illness. I mean, mental illness is a big part of it, but I mean, that's, as a country, you see more and more of that. I just think a lot of the stuff that, um, parents having a bad, kids have a bad day at home because their parents were fighting all night or something. It's getting younger and older, where those kids are coming to school and stuff.
I was just wondering, because when you said you alluded to the, earlier in the report, the trickle-down effect, and it was mentioned after you were talking about elementary schools that were time-consuming.
In social media, I mean, when I served in two thousand and six.
I got two more for you. So, I heard really good things about the hidden in plain sight, the thing that you had at the conferences at the high school. So, everybody really enjoyed that. So, hopefully, that will continue.
It'll be down at the community health actually. I was trying to recommend to you for educators and stuff. We change it up all the time. When we first started doing it, it was a really big learning experience for me.
And then, I guess my next thing is, I noticed that you had to make a trip out to the early hood, early childhood. Did you have to go out to Pine River's Early Childhood School?
Yeah.
Maybe I misread that. Is that something that just ran, yeah, responded to calls at each elementary schools as well, Pine River School for Young Learners?
Yeah.
Is that something that's just sporadically, or is that something that we need to maybe?
It's sporadically. It's more if Mr. Seaman has a question or something. I like to talk to people face to face and deal with stuff on the phone. Also, it's maybe changed kind of up to the building and stuff and see the young people.
I'm sure they enjoy that there. I was just wondering if that was?
I get to really pick one of them in a minute, too.
Thank you. I was just curious if that was something we had to, if there was security, like, security issues that we needed to amp up there, if there was some continuously?
No, no pressure.
No, okay.
I hope it's genuine, I still press you.
No, I was just wondering, because normally, you don't see having to go out to the young learners area first.
Well, yeah, I mean, I try to get out to all of the buildings, even the poor folks and stuff, just touch base with it. Actually, because Trinity got part of the Safe School grants.
Sure.
I'm on their predecessor's team and stuff. So, yeah, I guess if I decide to go there, it's.
Yeah, face-to-face is always best for me, too. So, I understand completely. Thank you.
Kristy, then Jeremy?
With the city ordinance for the juuling, so if a kid gets caught, is he referred then to?
It's, um, you're gonna citation or municipal court. They handle the same with a regular pack, back on my couch.
And then, does anything happen with them in school? Do they have a school punishment?
Yeah, there's school consequences.
Okay.
Jeremy?
A few quick questions for you, Mark. I mean, it's a good thing, but I just wanted to comment on this. I didn't see a whole lot of discussion regarding drug activity in your report. And compared to years past, it seems like there's been, you've talked about it less this year than you have in years past. So, does that mean there's, those incidents are done? Drug-related calls?
This year, there were. But, it's one of those things.
It's trendy, kind of a trendy kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, last year, chills. He was around. This year, chills from way back up. So, I mean, so, yeah, the drug offense is down. It weren't like they were ten years ago. I had pill cases and stuff down. Those were pretty notorious investigations.
I can imagine. Heat teams was the acronym for it?
Help you understand. I still can assume that has, or anybody has a, like, it's like the first responders at the school.
And last but not least, I'm not sure I mentioned, I heard something about popular schools at Trinity. So, if there's an incident in a popular school, do we spend those as well, or is there another roster for PD?
There's another roster for PD. It's just.
So, you only address public schools, and say public schools?
Yeah. I mean, I have gone there at their request, if, I don't know, all this stuff. But, like, when, at the year of grading, we had to write a letter, saying we were supporting my Al's, or her, and grab that letter and stuff to, I'm on AL's training, or my, our Al's team has been training all the schools, too, so.
Is that it? All right. Thank you, Mark. Next report is from Karen Baker. She supplied some information regarding our school-based counseling in some of our buildings and the frequency that they're there. This came as a response from a board member wondering about the, whether the district had applied for that grant, which we had not. Some districts are finding it difficult to spend the money with that grant because of the way it's earmarked, and then also, some of the things that other districts were purchasing with those grants, we've already got from outside agencies. So, you can see the information from Karen Baker regarding which buildings, the frequency that's laid out, and why, for example, Washington, just because of space right now, we have to provide the space for those outside counselors to come in. And Washington's a prime example of one of those buildings that just doesn't have the space right now. So, any questions at all for myself or Karen regarding school-based health services? Okay. Next, also from Karen, is the annual Act 125 Seclusion Restraint Reporting. This is a required report. We're required to report the number of seclusions, the number of restraints. And then, of those students, how many students were there, and how many of those students had a disability or were non-disabled? So, you can see her information there. You can also see that we've taken it, she's taken it from 2012, 13 through 2018, 19. Any questions Director of Human Resources report is next. Provides you with the department update, hires, resignations, retirements, terminations, leave of absences, and FMLA and conferences attended. Any questions for myself or Eddie? That's been one busy department, and that's also a department that has had 100% turnover in the last two or three months. And so, they've been working very hard. All right. Next is the monthly budget update from Brian Dasher. Any questions for Brian on the monthly status report? Cass's report is next, talking about the summer room cleaning, the upgrade to Windows 10. There's a print update. Boardroom upgrades, which you don't even have to look at the picture, but you can see right now that we've come a long ways in just a couple of short months. The only thing that's left is that the backdrop will go over a whiteboard that we're gonna install on this site and another whiteboard here. It doesn't work with our iPads, but with our computers, we're gonna be able to project on just one screen, just the other screen, or both at the same time. So, I think that's gonna work out nicely, no matter which way the room is configured. You're gonna be able to see whatever's being presented. Apple teacher and Google certification update. And online registration has been going very well. I've not heard maybe one or two, and it was just, it was more of a technological knowledge. And they, we've had people come here. We show them how to, how to register their students online, and it's been a very seamless process. So, that's been going extremely well.
What kind of percentage of registration is there online? Can you put a number to it, or?
All of it has to be online, but where are we at right now? We're almost at 100% with everybody registered.
Yeah, it was at the beginning of September, and I think, I don't have the exact percent I'm ready to determine. I think it was within 30% last year that did it. Paper hunt for that completely to the five deadline. And that, that has continually increased in the various categories. For example, this Saturday, we had a family come in and get some support. We have computers available and additional origin on factors. So, despite some of that being some certain policies.
Thanks, Christian.
Christian, if you gave a group of adults Chromebooks, how long do you think they would last before you'd have to replace them?
Well, the.
Or update because of technology?
Primarily for meetings, like personally. For meetings? Well, I would say, I don't know the exact refresh time for them on a Chromebook, because it's almost preseason, and our app equipment. But, I would say, it really depends on how well we take care of them. I would say it's probably very similar to four, five years in the MAX, MAX test, very similar, to take care of any difficulty now, you, you know, the same way you, and others, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
And that brings us to my superintendent's report. You see the monthly activities and meetings from my calendar. The What's Right in Education Conference was attended by just about every administrator. And what made this one nice was we were asked to present our Culture and Climate Playbook, and so, I've included some photos there. I've also included the conference agenda. I've also included the conference agenda, which I'm going to start doing a lot more of. I think it was Maria last time that had brought up, uh, a little bit more feedback for any time we go to professional developments, whether it was favorable or not, and, uh, and if so, what have we learned? And so, Studer provides us with the, not only leadership strategies and, and leadership, uh, principles, but they also provide us with, uh, the tools necessary to complete our district scorecard and our building and department scorecards. And so, very valuable conference. And you can see that, uh, just the two photos where we presented in one of the mini breakout sessions. Uh, we held three sessions, they were all very well-attended. Uh, participants had a choice between, uh, I believe about ten or, or twelve, uh, sessions to attend. We came back and it wasn't, but, uh, a couple of weeks later, we've met with our trainer, Melissa Matarazzo. We had a Studer Alt Retreat in the River Valley Bank in the basement. They were very gracious hosts, uh, to have us there. We wanted something. The boardroom was still kind of under construction, and we wanted something that was just a little bit different setting. And so, uh, worked real hard for a day and a half on our scorecard, and not only our scorecard, but onboarding our new administrators. Uh, as you know, we had, uh, Alex and Amy and Megan that are brand-new to us, and so it was kind of a, a quick immersion into what Studer's all about, with our rounding techniques and other techniques, and then getting our scorecard up and rolling, so, very busy day. If you click on the district scorecard, one thing that, uh, we're all very proud of is you're going to see some tabs at the bottom. If you click on the district scorecard, it'll take you to the template. If you click on the district scorecard, you can see our areas, our four pillars. Those come directly as they came out of our strategic planning process, word for word. Student achievement and success, community partnerships, student and staff wellness, and fiscal responsibility. And so, it wasn't, uh, that's, that's verbatim coming from strategic planning. We're still going to continue to work on our, uh, annual SMART goals, but if you'll notice about that, the strategic plan is a three-year measure of success. And so, this is going to be with us for three years, and it's going to grow and build into year two and into year three. So, we've got annual SMART goals, strategic actions, and then the progress monitoring that we do with, with each one. Then, as, as we finalize this district scorecard, the other departments and other buildings are going to be able to finalize theirs. Very proud of this. The other change that we made was, uh, and this was something we picked up, uh, from Chippewa Falls, as well as another conference. I thought it was great that, uh, we're all responsible for every pillar. Well, unless you assign somebody that's a primary responsibility, sometimes things don't get done or it's taken, uh, uh, for granted that somebody else is doing it. So, student achievement and success is Glenda and Kesha, community partnerships, Dale and John. Student and staff wellness is Karen and Eddie, and the fiscal responsibility is Brian, as well as Dale, because of the facilities, uh, uh, fiscal responsibility he has to the facilities. So, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, then next month, that we'll, we'll bring you a complete scorecard with every building and every department completed. Some of the things you'll also notice on the district scorecard, like I said, Fastbridge is new, so this will be a baseline year, at least for the fall. Once we get the fall scores in, from grade levels all the way Pine River through to high school, um, then we can start setting goals for the winter, and then we can start setting goals for the spring. So, a few of those are going to be baseline. The other thing that Dale and I are starting with our community partnerships pillar is, uh, a community survey. We want to survey our community three times throughout the year. In fact, Labor Day Parade, we're going to be handing out postcards with the QR, they say, there, Kesha, the QR code. We're talking about a way to put the QR code on our gator, and they can just take a photo of that, take the survey right on their phone, and, and we'll make it as easy as we possibly can. We'll be handing out those postcards. They can drop them in the mail, or they can do it electronically. We want to know, we want feedback from our community as to how we're doing as a community district. So, lots of exciting things going on. You'll also notice under, uh, students and staff wellness, which is new to us for a pillar, the Stop It app implementation is listed down there under strategic actions, and it's also going to be progress monitoring when we start looking at that data. So, that'll be a baseline year for that as well. And... Strategic planning progress, everybody, most everybody was there for that. I also included the old community conversations progress chart, unless there's, uh, if everybody agrees, I'll probably stop showing that. That's a static, it's, it's, it's fixed, and, and we're not going to be working on that anymore. Um, I've also restructured the administrative meeting format. Uh, what we called the Alt Team, the Administrative Leadership Team, uh, will still meet, um, but that's going to be to develop leadership strategies and skills for the first half, then we're going to focus on our district scorecard, and we're also going to focus on our, uh, POD and, our smarter funding for schools. And so, it's going to be a lot of teaching and a lot of learning as we go through our Alt Teams now. Anything else can pretty, pretty much be replaced by emails, face-to-face conversations. Uh, the principal leadership team meeting with myself and building principals, not APs, uh, and Glenda's going to be a, a part of that meeting as curriculum, and then other cabinet members will be there as, as appropriate. Uh, that's so we can streamline our communication from myself, from central office to our buildings. We need to make sure that everything is very consistent, very effective. That's where we're going to start getting into, um, what's going to be happening from the district level at building staff meetings, such as policy review, um, consistency when it comes to culture and climate. Uh, also teaching, um, strategies that are going to be effective in the classroom. So, we're really looking, I'm looking to streamline our communication this year, and I think that these two formats will certainly help with that. And then finally, uh, Tim Kite presentation. I, I strongly encourage everybody to be present for that. You see, we have a light breakfast on that day, uh, Thursday, August twenty-eighth. Light breakfast from seven-thirty to eight-fifteen. I will do a welcome back and kind of an expectations for the school year from eight-fifteen to nine. At that time, we'll also introduce, uh, new staff, so that people can start putting names and faces to our new staff members. And then Tim Kite is going from nine until noon. Very pleased that, uh, in working with the, uh, with Kite's, uh, people, that, uh, he brought it back down to the original price, that is, ten thousand dollars total, five thousand coming from Tomahawk, five thousand coming from Merrill Area Public Schools. So, I'm pleased, uh, to be able to offer that at that price. Tomahawk and their whole staff, they're bringing buses down, so they will be present. Uh, representatives from Church Mutual will be present. Uh, we've got area leaders that will be present that have been invited, as well as, uh, some local clergy, and so we're really looking for, uh, an outstanding event. So, I really encourage you to, to be there, and we can reserve seating for you as well. And the rest of it is the cabinet agendas. Um, knowing that we've got two new central office administrators with Glenda and Eddie, we've had a lot to talk about and a lot to do, so it's been a very, very busy month. Any questions?
Just to make a comment, uh, the district scorecard is extremely comprehensive. I mean, if you think back on every discussion we've had in the last year, you've captured it and put a date on it. So, I mean, uh, that's impressive.
Thank you.
It'll be fun to watch it move through its processes.
Thank you. This, this is, say this every year, this is going to be our year. We're knocking on the door, we just want to beat it over now, beat it down, so.
Well, you wrote, you wrote it down.
And we wrote it down, and, uh, you know, before, when you say all students will learn at this level, you know, yes, there's aspirations, but we need to make it measurable. We need to know who's responsible for it, and there has to be accountability built in, so thank you for that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Kevin, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda this evening are the committee reports. This, first of all, this, the one that does not appear, we did not schedule a facilities meeting. They have a lot of work going on in the summer, so we scheduled that accordingly where we did not meet this last month. We will pick up, as you'll see, future meetings at the end, we'll talk about our next meeting. But picking up with the first one on there is the Finance, HR Committee with the attached draft minutes from August seventh committee meeting. John Smith is the chair, and other members of that committee are available for questions. This is informational only. Does anyone have any questions or discussion for this committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Policy Committee. There was also attached the draft minutes from the August thirteenth committee meeting. Paul Prue is the chair, as other members of the committee that were in attendance are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions or discussion for our members of the Policy Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. The draft minutes from the August thirteenth committee meeting, uh, were forwarded on to us, and members of that committee are available also for questions. Does anyone have any questions for members of the CTP Committee? Hearing none, I just want to thank everyone for their attendance. Summer is certainly a, a busy time, and there's a lot of things going on, a lot, a lot of quality work getting done. Uh, I try to attend as many of the committee meetings as I can personally, and I know Neola just put their, uh, updates on the Policy Committee, so, as you can tell later, later in our meeting tonight, there was a lot of policies that had to be reviewed, so a lot of things that were, were handled, not just there, but in the CTP Committee, planning for the school year coming, coming up, and certainly, uh, budget time and, and hiring time with Finance and HR. So, thanks, everybody, for all their work at the committee level. Next on our agenda is the unfinished business. We have the approval of the updated Activities Handbook, formerly known as our Coach's Handbook. We had a topic summary sheet attached from John Miller, and a recommended motion from the Finance, HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the updated version of that, please, and, a second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Jeremy. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Moving next on to our agenda, we have the Board of Education Business. The first item there is the band and choir trip to New York City with an attached topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray, the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the Merrill High School Band and Choir trip to the New York City for the spring of twenty-twenty.
We have a motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Christie. Any discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the review of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Budget Book Draft. The attached topic summary sheet was, or is, from Brian Dasher. It's informational only. But if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Brian would come up to the table and answer them, or Dr. Sample will help as necessary. Any questions in review of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Budget Book Draft? All right. Thank you for the update. Next item on our agenda is the School Health Services Agreement for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, grades starting at four K through twelve, with the attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Jeremy?
I recommend a motion to approve the Lincoln County Health Department's School Health Services Agreement for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, for grades four K through twelve, in the amount of one hundred thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
Motion by Jeremy, do I have a second? Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion, questions on the motion or the topic? Paul, go ahead.
I'd like to add, although that, that price has been, like, maybe the last, I don't know, a year. To have an entire, kind of, duration of time, that's a nice, nice thing.
Absolutely. I, I think, uh, the timing was unique, and Mr. Dasher was walking by the door when they talked about a forty-dollar, uh, increase, so.
Especially considering on the irons.
We did note that, just, uh, because his timing was impeccable, walking by the door, but.
Especially considering on the irons, our health department has in the fire, they're, uh, very busy folks, and they have a relatively small crew.
Absolutely, so thanks, thanks for the note. Certainly working together to keep that, uh, amount affordable for the district. Any other discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is to keep extended or added minutes of the school day from twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year at the Prairie River Middle School with an attached topic summary sheet from Principal Ryan Martinovich, Mark Seaman, as well as Dr. Sample, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the extension of minutes to the Prairie River Middle School School Day, reflecting the start of school at seven-fifty AM, end of the day, at three oh-six.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion by Paul, a second by Jeremy. Any discussion, questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Teacher Handbook Update. We have an attached topic summary sheet from Eddie Then, and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the updated Teacher Handbook as presented.
Motion by John, do I have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion, questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Support Staff Handbook Updates, with also the attached topic summary sheet from Eddie Then, and a recommended motion. Do I have a motion this evening? John?
Recommend a motion to approve the updated Support Staff Handbook as presented.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, between Merrill Area Public Schools and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of North Central Wisconsin. And we had attached the MOU, or the Memorandum of Understanding, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Merrill Area Public Schools and Big Brothers, Big Sisters of North Central Wisconsin for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two year.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Linda. Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the First Reading for Policy Fifty-Five Thirty for Drug Prevention. The policy was attached. The Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
Recommend a motion to approve Policy Fifty-Five Thirty Drug Prevention as a first reading.
Motion by John, do I have a second? Second by Christie. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Second Reading for Policy Twenty-three Forty, School Trips and Field Trips. The Policy Committee has a recommendation, including that recommended motion. If, uh, I could have a motion this evening, please, Paul?
I move to approve the second reading and approval of the Policy Twenty-three Forty School Trips.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is a legislative meeting regarding school funding flaws, with an upcoming Special Finance, HR Committee meeting that will be held on September thirtieth here in the boardroom, I believe. And then I'd like, uh, board member John Smith to, uh, report out on this topic, please.
Let me just give the board some background. I think we all got a letter from Mary Fluskowski at one point, and then. Just give the board some background. I think we all got a letter from Mary Flaskowski at one point in the last several months. And it was regards to budget considerations. And so I had wrote her a letter and reached out and offered her the opportunity to attend one of our finance committee meetings so that she might get some background into how it really affects the district, whether it be declining enrollment, or rural, rural districts, or whatever the characteristic. And Brian agreed that it would make for a good opportunity to educate a legislator and, in addition, have a relationship in case there's ever, they need us to answer questions for them when they're down there making decisions. So it's just an opportunity for a legislator to meet with the school board and have a dialogue. We'll do our best to kind of explain our challenges and hopefully they'll take that into consideration whenever they do budgeting down in Madison. I extended also the invitation to Tom Tiffany and their offices, working to see if they'd like to join us for the meeting, so. If you're available, should be interesting discussion for an hour.
Any questions or clarification on this topic from Mr. Smith or myself? All right. Thank you, John. Appreciate the update. Moving on in the agenda, next we would have the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, does anyone want anything pulled this evening from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would be hearing none. I would be looking for a motion. Christie? We can go onto the farther down. There is a paragraph of a recommended motion, please.
Item E.
Item E, which would have the motion. And each one otherwise, we would have to do each policy separate. So we can do consent agenda as one motion, if you would, please.
So I recommend one motion, is that correct?
Yes, please.
So it starts motion to approve consent agenda.
Policy, the video surveillance?
No.
Go down a little further.
Donations above it and B, or personal report B, that B is out of donation. All hearing is about this. The one was down there.
It is quite a ways down there. We did have a lot of policy work.
Was it all of them?
It is all, underneath all of them, it goes through donations and then a recommended motion for approval, consent agenda as follows. Jeremy, can you help her find that place?
I don't see how it's gonna tell us the pages. I don't, not on here. It's just the, like, PDF format. Not that I can tell. And if it does, you'll have to show me how that works. If it does, show me how, because then it would be a lot easier. Yeah, okay, because I don't think I've seen.
Yeah, there's, right. Right.
Do you want, does she read the whole thing? That's what I thought.
You say everyone, everyone was waiting for Christie's hand to come up, yes.
See, you write a passage.
Oh, gosh.
You want to take it?
I recommend approval of the consent agenda as follows. Motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes second readings and approvals of the following policies. Policy seven-four-four-zero-point-zero-one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. Policy eight-three-nine-zero, animals on district property. Policy zero-one-four-two-point-four, oath. Policy zero-one-six-five-point-one, notice of regular meetings. Policy zero-one-six-eight-point-one, meeting minutes. Policy two-two-six-zero, non-discrimination and equal access. Policy two-two-six-zero-point-zero-one, section five-oh-four, ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Policy two-two-six-zero-point-oh-two, English language proficiency. Policy two-four-one-one, school counseling and academic and career planning. Policy two-four-five-one, program or curriculum modifications. Policy five-one-one-one, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Policy five-one-one-two, entrance age. Policy five-one-one-three, open enrollment program, inter-district. Policy five-three-four-zero, student accidents, illnesses and concussions. Policy five-four-six-zero, graduation requirements. Policy five-eight-three-zero, student fundraising. Policy six-one-five-two, student fees, fines and charges. Policy six-four-seven-zero, payment of invoices. Policy six-six-one-zero, student activity fund. Policy seven-four-three-four, use of tobacco on school premises. And policy seven-five-four-zero-point-zero-one, technology privacy. Policy eight-three-three-zero, student records. Minutes of the July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, and August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, meetings. Claims, vouchers and receipts totaling three million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and four cents. The personal report, which includes the hiring of Kathleen Nichols, Kate Goodrich Elementary Teacher, effective August twenty, twentieth, twenty nineteen. Lindsay Breheim, Jefferson Elementary Teacher, effective August twentieth, twenty nineteen. Amy Han, PRMS Teacher, effective August twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Bonhor Lor, Kate Goodrich Elementary Teacher, effective August twentieth, twenty nineteen. Bas Shaw, to Washington Special Education Aid, effective August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Jessica Parrott, Kate Goodrich Classroom Aid, effective August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Heather Klimic, NEC Classroom Aid, effective August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And Teresa Shruskowsky, Washington Elementary After School Coordinator, effective August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. The transfers of Megan Sherman to Washington, Jefferson Library Media Specialist, effective August twentieth, twenty nineteen. Lori Jacoby to PRS by L Teacher, effective for the fall of two thousand nineteen. And Talina Bliven to Washington Elementary Teacher, effective for the fall of two thousand nineteen. The resignation of Jennifer Winter, effective June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And Cheryl Burton, effective August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And donations totaling three hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion by Christie. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Linda?
I abstain from the July twenty-third minutes and July twenty-fifth portion of those meeting minutes.
Thanks, Linda. Any other abstentions? Jeremy?
I abstain from the July twenty-fifth minutes.
All right. Those abstentions are noted. Thank you. Items for future meetings and possible action to improve the future discussions thereof. What we have started the last few meetings, if anyone has a recommendation, would suggest that to the group. And as a majority, a simple majority would agree to that, then we would be added to our, our list for agenda preparation for future in assigned either a committee or go directly to the next board meeting. Does anyone have any items they would like to recommend for future meetings? Linda?
I guess I'd like to know a little bit more process of how we go about the hiring for our coaches, football, athletics, things like that. Like if one coach steps down and the assistant takes over, the process of how that all plays and rules out and how we go about. Like, is it the principal at the high school who selects the coaches? Or is it the athletic director type situation? Who's all in that process?
All right, we have a suggestion by Board Member Linda. All those in favor of adding that at the committee or board level, future meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to that? Didn't hear any, so. I would believe we would start that at the finance HR, and then we would bring that back to the board and we would determine if Dr. Sample would like anyone to speak on that or just an informational only report on that process.
It's actually very timely because we're having discussions about all of those part-time type stipend positions and how they are hired, how they're posted, how they're onboarded. So I think that'll work really well. It's very timely.
I'm sure this may be, you know, common sense, but we could also get along with that. It's a great idea, also get an update or information on how salary is decided for coaches. Is it a set rate? Is it per coach qualification type of work?
Sure.
Can I go on all that whole package you were talking about?
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, that would probably be a review. I think there's a coach's salary schedule published, but we could include that in the presentation, so. Yeah, there's a coach's salary schedule out there, but we could just roll it up into one nugget, I guess.
We went through that last year in some detail. Some balancing of some different things to understand those.
Is there a policy on it?
A hiring policy that's specific to coaching staff?
Right.
There's hiring guidelines and policy. Dr. Sample, are you aware of anything specific?
There are guidelines, then there's guidelines, did you say?
Yeah, I think that's what we're planning on reviewing is, is whether the practice matches the policy and to bring the practice into the policy and not craft a new one, but make everyone do the same thing, since it's a paid W-two earning position. Right. So if you're hiring a, a teacher, custodian, anybody, any coach, choir, you know, a director of a musical, or it would all fall under the same process. So Eddie Then and Brian are already looking into that for next human resource, so it'll probably come in. We can create a packet from that process rather than just throw it in the minutes, if that's helpful.
And is there a difference between the paid ones and the unpaid ones?
Meaning the difference between a paid coach and a volunteer?
Right.
I guess, Kevin, once it's all, like, compiled together, maybe it would be best just to bring it to the board as, so it's like out there. So that if there are more questions when it does come out, we could address it right away, type thing.
Just so we understand. I'm not saying we need changes.
Right, no, I know exactly. Because sometimes, you know, you just read some of that stuff and then after the fact, it's like, okay, maybe you still have more questions.
It's like exactly what's in the brew right now, so now we have a good reason to present it.
To bring it to the board and that.
Thank you.
Paul, something to add?
Yes. Policy governance hat says that this should be directed to Dr. Sample for his review to see if all the questions that we brought forth as a board need to be answered. This is not something the board should be doing. This is involving in the day-to-day operation of our school. Remember, we're at that three-hundred-thousand-foot level. These are the things that we don't discuss without Dr. Sample taking over. Present it to us. And at that point in time, we have questions. That would be the proper time to do it. I don't think this is, I don't think this is an item for the board to handle.
But in my opinion, it is policy governance, because like John just said, as part of the discussion, we're going to make sure that whoever is in policy or practices, make sure that we're aligned, which we've discussed several times. People want to make sure the board is to make sure that what we're doing is aligned with policy.
You're interfering in his operation as superintendent of schools. His, his, he is our employee, if only our employee. We have no other employees.
Correct.
Okay, we don't supervise any, just John Sample. So we tell Dr. Sample, we want information. We don't craft the information. He should craft it, bring it to us for our approval. If we don't approve it, then it's time to send it back and start over.
I can understand if we were wanting to make changes. We recommend those, Dr. Sample, and he would see what we need to go through to implement those changes. I'll request him to simply information his board.
No, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna intervene briefly here and just say, I, I agree with what you're saying, Paul, and what Jeremy's saying. The timing is impeccable, as Mr. Smith has already alluded to. There's been a lot of committee work. And I believe either way, Linda's recommendation and the added items, we're going to come forward. And in this particular case, we're, we're just giving some additional guidance to Dr. Sample to bring that forward. I think it'll be helpful, so we're not doing it a second or a third time. We do try to be efficient and collaborate the best we can. And he does look forward to understanding and making sure he's presenting that information as the board would like, so.
One last time.
Please.
Are we presenting to him or is he presenting to us?
He, he is going to bring.
Are we presenting to him by this meeting or is he presenting to us?
I just wanted to know how it flows. That's it.
Go ahead.
Don't want to make any decisions.
I don't, I mean, perhaps an attendance at a finance human resource committee meeting would be in orders. I mean, in the actual committee itself, we are committed to working collaboratively to provide the students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. So it's an exchange of dialogue led mainly by Brian Dasher and John Sample. And it's based on topics that are brought up throughout the month. So in this particular case, there are situations where people are onboarded into the organization and there may not be a application on file or the exact same processes used that we would use for any other employees. So I think I'm agreeing with Jeremy. It's basically the administration presenting to the committee that the practice matches the policy. And if it doesn't, they'll make it match the policy or we'll tweak the policy. But that's just basically what committee work is. It's, we don't, and until we have a consensus at committee, we don't bring it here, so. At least that's my take.
That'd be correct. And if anyone has talked about items for next committee meetings, those have been ongoing work, as you stated already. The, the timing is, is good by what Linda is asking. And there are many times, when we go into a school year, the new coaches are hired and reviewing those, we ask for annual reports all of the time. So in this case, we're gonna start the school year off with giving some direction to Dr. Sample to bring that forward. Anyone else have any additional items for future meetings? We do have a number of other unfinished items that we've talked about. We'll continue to work on that in priority order as we go through our, our policy for agenda preparation. We have, a number of them are taking some, some time to gather some more data and have been touched base on various committees. But they were getting there as far as getting everything handled. Look forward to seeing that list continue to shrink as, as we move forward here into another school year. And just a reminder that the next item there on the agenda is, is we continue to show the board decision financial impact summary. So anytime that we have a motion and we make a decision here, is it cost neutral? Is there an effect on the upcoming budget, what that is, so that is provided. We've done that now the last couple of years here, just to have everybody aware of what's going on. Anyone have any questions on that particular document? It's just to keep things in the front of our mind as we make decisions that there, there could be, or maybe there are not budget impacts. So that is another checks and balance system that we have. Next on our agenda is the reminder tomorrow, there's a radio activity scheduled, eight fifteen in the morning, a Blue Jay seven-thirty radio station. I'll be out of the area, so Dr. Sample will be going solo tomorrow. Appreciate you picking up the load there, reviewing tonight's meeting and all the exciting things leading into the school year. Also for, as we get into our future meeting schedule, I'd just like to thank everyone, as we already talked about on consent agenda. And we've talked about committee work. I'd like to thank everyone personally for their attendance at our DAPs training. What a great start for the process. DAPs being the district. attendance at our D A P S training. What a great start for the process. D A P S being the district administration performance evaluation service or software system. We had a great evening, starting to understand everything that is going on there and setting everything in motion. I look forward to our, our next get-together while we establish the timeframes and the group norms on what will be going on there. With that being said, I'd like to update everyone on future meetings. The next meeting will be the facilities committee meeting on Wednesday, September fourth at three-thirty P M here in the boardroom, followed by the finance H R committee meeting that evening, Wednesday, September fourth at four-thirty P M here in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting will be getting together on Monday, September ninth at six-thirty P M out at Maple Grove. The C T P, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting will meet on Wednesday, September eleventh at four-thirty P M here in the boardroom. The annual meeting and budget hearing will be Monday, September sixteenth at five-thirty P M in the high school auditorium. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday. Is it the twenty-fourth? Okay, I was going to ask. It is the twenty-fourth of September, twenty nineteen at five-thirty P M here in the boardroom. Please make note of that. Next, I would be looking for the contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, parent F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories of disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where parent B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation. Purpose of the closed session is to update the board regarding the transitioning process of a professional staff member and to discuss a citizen's request to be added to the agenda. Do I have that motion? Motion by Jeremy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Linda. I have a roll call, please, Tammy.
Christie Stellingworth. Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Nubs Dashford.
Aye.
Bob Pooh.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. I will allow for a ten-minute recess as. We'll make it a five-minute recess as we clear the room and secure the doors. Thank you.